I call the April 14, 2020 School Board Meeting to order. In consideration of the current health and safety concerns during the COVID-19 emergency, guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as Executive Order 20-91 issued by Governor DeSantis, it is necessary to modify our board meeting process to comply. Please note that board members and staff may be participating by phone rather than being present in the boardroom. The educational services facility is closed to the public, but the board meeting audio and video are being livestreamed so the community can watch and listen to the meeting through usual channels. In regards to public participation, community members who wanted to make comments were asked to register in advance on the district website. Those who registered were called Monday evening, April 13th, and their comments were recorded, limited to three minutes each. These comments will be replayed under the public comments section of the agenda. The board appreciates your patience and understanding. While this process is different, we are in uncertain times and must keep safety in mind while we continue operations, including public participation in our board meetings. Ms. McDougall will be joining us telephonically this evening. As well as voting in our electronic agenda system, Ms. Escobar will be calling out for each of our votes for added convenience and transparency to those watching and/or listening at home. Pam, roll call, please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. McDougall?
Here.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
The board will now hold a moment of silent reflection in memory of BPS family members who have recently passed away. Darius Gowens, a 12th grade student from Heritage High School; Tim Hubner, a custodian from Ralph Williams Elementary; and Lane Anderson, a Fiddler's Parent Education Specialist. We'll now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
At this time, I want to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, programs, and community members for the contributions afforded to Brevard Public Schools. Anyone want to volunteer to go first? Ms. Campbell?
There are so many people doing so many amazing things right now, but the words that came to mind today and I was just wondering about was community. And I just wanted to share my own. I know.
There we go. I'll try that. The word that I want to share tonight was community. I've seen so many examples in the past few weeks of ways that our schools and our community are working together in to find solutions. And just a couple I want to mention, McNair Middle School, one of their technology clubs was asked to help 3D print, you may have seen them on Facebook, these ear protectors for the nurses and the medical staff who have to wear the face masks all day and it rubs against their ears, so it's a little plastic thing, but the club wasn't able to access their 3D printers. And so through the Pi Network and through some other social media shares, they put it out there. And there were families of, you know, for example, a family I know they have students at Bayside and at Stone, but they have a 3D printer. And so they printed 100, somebody else printed 100. So they have hundreds of these little ear protector things that were produced by some of our students because of the connections, and then they're going to the hospital.
Nice. And then today I saw another example on our Pi page.
Hold on, Ms. Campbell.
Yeah.
You can have mine.
Pam, to the rescue.
Is that good? Can you hear me? On our Pi page today, Deborah Foley, our Pi coordinator, said that Northrop Grumman is actually 3D printing face shields for healthcare workers. And so they put a call out because they're looking for the old transparencies that we used to use like on overhead projectors. And they're asking teachers, hey, do you have in your stash, you know, some transparencies? And I will tell you, Dr. Mullins, we've had a little issues and the teachers say, I have some, but they're in my school. So we may need to see what we can do, but I just wanted to also put a little plug in there if any of our teachers or other business leaders have those plastic transparencies that we all used to use back in, you know, back in the day. Northrop Grumman is going to take those and 3D print them into face shields for our healthcare workers. So just another way of our community working together in such creative ways. So that's what I got.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan, you want to go next?
Yeah, I did. I want to just say thank you. This is the time that it takes a village, right? And I've seen my fellow board members doing things. I've seen teachers. I've seen administrative people coming together and taking care of our number one resource in this county, which is our children. And I am so honored to be a part of an organization that not only stands high, but has been doing more than what's been asked of them. The connection that we have between our teachers and staff and administrators with our children, I've never seen anything like it. I had to give a huge shout out to Ms. Gomond. She was literally driving, trying to make sure that the kids inside the neighborhoods knew that they could come to her school to actually get fed. And then she was able to apply and receive some operations where they could bring food into some of these, some of the poorest areas in Melbourne. And then when she found that they needed clothes, she was able to coordinate through a resource that we have that the Church of the Era was able to bring clothes for those children. And just to make sure that our kids not only are learning, but they're okay, because the bond between our staff and our children doesn't go for a paycheck, it goes for a lifelong commitment. And I think a lot of that has to do with the commitment that Ms. Gomond has. Ms. Hall from Sable Elementary School was in there working with getting, delivering into some of these poorer areas also. And when we were inside there, she was standing there handing them out to the kids. She was standing there saying, hi Johnny, hi Sue, hi everybody else. And she was making sure that they were okay. And in one case, we found that there was four of those children that didn't have a portion of their roof on their trailer. So she was able to coordinate getting a tarp put over the top of it. And, you know, with everything being happening between 3D printing and getting these resources inside of our schools or inside of our community, we are an amazing organization beyond just what we do as far as getting a paycheck and doing our board meetings and everything else. I did want to give a big shout out to Family Promise of Brevard. They worked with a family of 10 that was in a motel room, and we finally got them into Section 8 housing. Erin Harvey from the Boys and Girls Club's been inside of our projects, working every single day, making sure that those kids knew that the food is there to be picked up. Church of the Era donated a bunch of things, and Margarita Chavez from Third Street Bridge made sure that the Hispanic community was represented when she started asking for a lot of the translations. So you talk about a village. I mean, every day we stand up here and we talk about the great things that the kids do and some of our teachers and everybody else, but it's amazing to see the connection that these teachers have with some of these kids and the principals. So I just wanted to say that my shout out today goes to our entire staff and school board and everybody else for what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Duskovich?
I have two, did I turn this on or is it on?
You're on.
Can you hear me? I have two shout outs. One is Rebecca Talia, the sixth grade teacher at Indy Atlantic Elementary School. She had an idea last week. She has a friend who is a nurse who asked her if she had any wipes, antibacterial wipes. And she said, oh, I have, this was right before we closed up the classrooms, maybe it was a week and a half ago. She said, I have, I have some in my classroom. And so she went and got her one little container of wipes. And then the nurse gushed about how all the nurses were going to be so excited at her nurses station at homes because they were going to have antibacterial wipes. And she was shocked that they didn't have wipes to wipe down kind of the countertop areas where people come in, phones, things of that nature. And so she just did an all call within Indy Atlantic Elementary School and came up with 60 or 65 containers of antibacterial wipes that teachers felt like they weren't going to use during this time period. They kept back wipes that they're going to need if we happen to reopen, but they went ahead and donated, the wipes that had been donated to them already from parents for their classrooms. And since the classrooms were going to be closed, and she gave them to the nurses and the nurses were ecstatic and took pictures with them with a card of them and how excited they were. Then she reached out to us and Dr. Mullins was able to coordinate, just put out an all call, you know, through staff and down to the teachers and any teachers that felt like they had additional extra available. And it turned out to be a whole pallet, almost 600 of them yesterday arrived at the Health First Distribution Center, and Ms. Talia showed up. And she, she said, her first words out of the car were, I didn't know there were going to be cameras, because there was like nine news outlets there all lined up with a press conference like podium and all the microphones. And I felt a little bad for her, but she owned it. And at the end, the reporters were like, you should be a motivational speaker, because she's so passionate about, she just started like a national movement of getting, calling it teachers to nurses or something of that nature. Anyway, I just got a text just a minute ago that said, today.com just picked it up and did a great story on it. So we might, might see some more coverage of our great little teacher there at Indy Atlantic doing good work. I think it's a prime example of our community between the school district, the largest employer, and, and just one of our three major health networks here partnering together to, to help our community move forward. And then the other shout out goes to Children's Hunger Project. I know I probably mentioned them the last school board meeting, but they are hustling and bustling, quadrupling what they normally serve as far as meals. They have packings every week if people are interested with volunteers. They're following all health precautions, you're six feet apart, packing meals masked, gloved. But they are putting, in the two hour session, they have nine people in there doing almost 700 meals, putting them together. And so they're, they're trying to keep up with what we are, what our team is doing on Fridays. And so they show up on Fridays to give the students meals for the weekend. And it's been a lot. There's only, I think, three employees at Children's Hunger Project. So this is a huge undertaking for them. So I just want to give them a thank you. Thanks, Ms. Belford.
You're welcome and thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Ms. McDougall, did you have any recognitions you wanted to share?
I just want to give a shout out to our teachers, our students, our families and our community for, this is a very different time for them and how well everybody's adapting and how hard everybody's working. And to my fellow school board members who, you're right, Matt, it takes a village. And it's wonderful to see that we're all coming together. And that's all I have, Ms. D.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Dr. Mullins, any recognition you'd like to share?
Yeah, I have to, I have to chime into some of the examples. And you know, it's a moment like this that we're never going to capture all of the amazing work that's going out there. All we can do is give snippets of what we know is happening across all the layers of the organization. So I'd like to do a shout out to a teacher who I know exemplifies the 5,000 teachers that are supporting our kids out there. I had the, I don't know that I've ever met her in person, but I met her via email this week, Ms. Angela, I think you pronounce her name Yurkies, at Quest Elementary School. And one of her teacher, or excuse me, one of her parents sent her an email, you know, concerned about her first grader and her struggle with reading. And through our eye-ready diagnostic tools and the activities the teachers are providing the students, Ms. Yurkies was able to provide an amazing feedback, diagnostic detailed about how this parent's child had done on the oral reading activity with specific suggestions of what to work on at home. It was, it was just amazing. And I was so impressed. I tried, I got CC'd on it, but I emailed back to Ms. Yurkies and just said, thank you for going above and beyond, even remotely. So Ms. Yurkies, if you're out there listening, there is an impact pin on its way to you because that is an example of the kind of above and beyond our teachers are going to make sure that our kids truly maintain the continuity of, of learning even while they're away from us during this distance learning time. This week, or late last week, I also had, actually it was over the weekend, I got an email from Dr. Sullivan when she was kind of web surfing her, some of our schools and what they were doing to provide resources to our teachers. And Madison Middle School's faculty and staff and administrative team have done a phenomenal job of launching their own parent resource website. Places that they can go to get tutorial help and to make sure they know how to clearly and efficiently communicate with their teachers and just, it wasn't required, wasn't part of our instructional continuity plan, but the, the entire faculty came together and did that, including staying connected with their, with their students and their community. So just appreciation to Dr. Gowens, the principal, and the entire staff at Madison Middle School. And then I heard the, the example and testimonial of one of our principals. And he took the time over the course of almost an entire day last week and called every one of his faculty members. And he's in a considerably large high school, probably over 100 staff. And he said, I'm not calling to see how you're doing as a teacher, I'm calling to see how you're doing as a person. And the, the commitment and the dedication, if you can imagine the time it took to do that, but the investment it was to demonstrate that there are people behind all of these assignments that are getting posted and activities and grades and so on, and our leaders are taking the time to make sure that they stay connected with their faculty and staff. So just a shout out to Mr. Wilson for his efforts to connect with his faculty during this time as well. And then I also have to, I want to do a shout out to our communications team. It has been no small task to keep our community connected, assured, reassured, and remain in touch with everything that's going on, the day-to-day changes that seem to happen and the questions that emerge and the wanderings and the uncertainty and the anxiety. And our, our communications team, under the direction of Mr. Reed, Nikki Hensley, Kat Allen, Sarah Almond, Deborah Foley, Mike, Francisco, help me.
Dan Jankowski.
Dan Jankowski. You know, it's a, it's a army, it's a small army, but they get a lot done, and they've done a wonderful job of keeping our, our families connected with everything that's going on and being responsive in the moment and, and so on. So just a shout out to them. And then finally, our food services team, I know we've talked about the, the ramp up of providing food for our community. They're, they're serving, I heard today that it was over 14, 15,000 students who came through our schools. I haven't confirmed that, but I know the last number was 12,500 students that came through our sites to receive food support. And what is hard to capture with just the numbers is, I mean, how do you prepare for that? I mean, our food services team, under the direction of Mr. Thornton, just they find ways to stay prepared. I had the privilege of visiting Fair Glen last week and during their, their meal pickup time. And the manager, and I feel terrible, I can't remember her name right now, but she was just a bundle of energy and positivity and optimism and can-do, and it was so inspiring. It was so impressive. And her entire team, everybody was smiling and they were, half of them were sitting outside in the heat, waiting to distribute meals, and they had such an efficient process, honoring and adhering to social distancing. Everyone was just working together. And then folks inside were cleaning after all of the, the work had been done in the kitchen and the cafeteria, and the tables were set up, and they had systems and they had stacks. And it was just so impressive that they had found ways to make sure that they were ready for the next day's meals, whether it was 300, 400, or 600, they were ready. So just a huge kudos to our food services team and the commitment that they have made to consistently provide that support to our community. So thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. And I'm going to piggyback off of you just a little bit with a couple of the things that you mentioned. I don't know if you all are aware, but the food services teams that are working at the schools are typically mixed teams. They're not individuals all from the same school. And so not only are they working so incredibly hard, but they've been shoved in with people that they didn't have a previous relationship with, didn't know their work styles and those sorts of things. And they have been really working so incredibly hard to serve our community. So much so, and, and you know, I think the ripple effect of all that we're doing is really kind of phenomenal. So one of the food service workers that I helped at Coquina Elementary two weeks ago when I was there serving food, went to a grab-and-go restaurant the other night, and she happened to be there as well. And I asked her how it was going with food service, and she said, oh no, you know, it's going well and, and all of this, she said, and, and you know, it's so good to see the family. She's like, but you know, I had a parent come through the other day who was just really worried about her son. He's really struggling. And she's like, I felt so bad because I didn't know what to do for him. You know, I didn't know what to do for her or for him. And I said, well, you know, we have resources available. We, all of our guidance counselors, our mental health counselors, our, you know, all those people are still reaching out and doing what they can to support our students. And she said, would you mind giving me that information? And so I was able to get that information to her. She was able to share the information with the family largely based on the work of the communication department and the work that they've been doing to get the videos out with all of those, those resources. And so that was a really easy way for us to funnel that information. So it, to me, it's interesting how it all comes together for that huge impact. And then I also have to give a huge shout out to our teachers who have been just rock stars at rolling with it and making it work and collaborating and, you know, actually some of them commenting that, you know, the ones I'm friends with on Facebook, that they love the way that they've been able to collaborate because they typically don't get that opportunity when they're so busy in the classroom with students to have that collaboration. And how so many of them are jumping in and helping each other with technology solutions that they were not aware of. And just really, really coming together as a, as a team. We've always known they were committed to serving our students, but I think this is just such a unique, I'll call it an opportunity. Obviously, it's not a great time, right? But, but, but an opportunity for them to embrace the challenges that have come to them. And then I also want to give a shout out to our school-based staff that are working. I have gotten text messages and phone calls from instructional assistants, from guidance counselors, just checking in. I just want to make sure you guys are okay. How's it going? Do you need anything? If you do, here's my phone number or call me during these hours, text me anytime, just let us know what you need. So the teachers are working incredibly hard, but we have a lot of other staff members that are working really hard in the schools too. So yeah, absolutely. And then of course, our district staff, who I think a lot of people don't realize what's been going on here at the district office trying to make all of this work. But from Russell Cheatham with, you know, making all of the technology work to Sue Han who has worked so hard to make our virtual meetings work, to our leading and learning team that is coordinating the support for our teachers so they can be successful. Just, just everyone really at, at the district has been working so incredibly hard to make this successful. And so kudos to them and kudos to you guys for all that you're doing. And it's, like I said, not, not the best of times, but I think a lot of goods coming out of it. So very good.
Ms. Belford?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could just make a, had a thought this week that, you know, we're kind of put some things on hold because we're not able to, you know, nobody's at our schools, but I think that maybe we can continue with our pen presentations virtually, send a staff member a picture of the card and the pen and say, you know, you've been penned whatever, and when, when we can get it to you, we will. But just, there's been so many, there's so many people worthy of that recognition. So I'm going to start that this week, I promise, to send some of those recognitions out and to virtually present those until we can get them to them personally.
Ms. Campbell, I'll add on that if you want, when you have pens and can bring them by, Ms. Tammy and Pam will help get them out in the mail. I know that, I don't know about your homes, but it's going to the mailbox and getting, we've gotten some handwritten letters from family and that sort of thing that, you know, it's just kind of neat during this time of not being able to see from. So I think it'd be great if we could send those out in the mail to our, our teams out and they could get it even at home during this time.
Great idea, Ms. Campbell. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 22 consent items, three action items, and one information item. Changes made to the agenda since being released to the public are as follows. Consent item F10 on student expulsions and action item G31 on resolution regarding the extension of the one-half cent school capital outlay sales surtax received revisions. Item F17 on alternative calendar 2019-2020 due to COVID-19 is in addition.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion? All right. And board members, just as a reminder, we're going to actually vote on Agenda Plus, and then Pam is also going to call for a voice vote. Okay? So seeing no discussion, please vote.
It's not coming up.
Is Ms. McDougall able to vote?
Ms. McDougall did vote. We're just waiting on Mr. Susan, who's having some technical difficulties, I think.
It's just saying no actions available online.
Scroll down a little.
I did.
It's not down there?
No. Oh, hang on. It's there. It's there. It was hidden. Got it.
All right. And the motion passes 5-0, Ms. Escobar.
If you would just give me an aye or a nay. Mrs. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougall?
Aye.
Ms. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Aye.
All right. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about our administrative staff recommendations?
There are two persons on this evening's agenda for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell.
Discussion?
Discussion.
First of all, it doesn't make me happy to second this motion because there's two people on here that we're, hate to see go, but you know, certainly appreciate Mr. Small and his, his tenure at Bayside High School, but it really hit me in the gut to see Janice Scholl's name on our list tonight. I know she's still with us till the end of July, but I just want to say publicly what a treasure she is to our district. When people, you know, talk about the great things that our career technology programs have done, every single one of those programs in our schools has her fingerprints all over it. And I know that Dr. Sullivan has expressed to me what, what a loss this is going to be. She's got huge shoes to fill, but just appreciate her so much, and she certainly deserves a wonderful retirement, but oh man, we're going to miss her terribly.
Couldn't agree more. Ms. Campbell, any additional discussion? All right, then please vote.
Mrs. Belford?
Aye.
Mrs. McDougall?
Aye.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. We are now at public comments. As indicated in my opening statement, persons wishing to comment were registered in advance on the district website and were then called and the comments recorded. We will listen to the recorded messages at this time.
My name is Sue Han. I'm the superintendent for Facility Services for Brevard Public Schools. And I, along with our folks at telephone panel meeting, will be hosting your meeting tonight. In consideration of the current health, safety, and safety concerns during the COVID-19 emergency and guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as Executive Order 2091 issued by Governor DeSantis, we kind of modify our procedures a bit for public comment. So tonight, your comments will be recorded and we will play them back under the public comments section of the board meeting tomorrow. As with our normal protocol, each speaker is limited to three minutes. Our moderator will keep track of your time and ask you to conclude your comments when you have reached three minutes. As with our normal meetings, always keep in mind that reasonable forums expected at all times, and keep your comments appropriate for children who may be watching or listening from home. So before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if applicable, and identify the topic that you will be discussing. As with our normal board meetings, we won't be answering questions on tonight's call, but our staff will follow up with you if you have a question or need a response. So with that, we can go ahead with our public comments. Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome. Thank you. So if you do have a public comment, please go ahead and press zero now, and Taylor will get your name.
and press zero now and, uh, Taylor will get your name and then push you through to speak. So, uh, go ahead and press zero now and as soon as Taylor gets us through, I will pull you up and, um, we can get your comments live. Uh, and it looks like they're coming through right now. Hi. All right. Anthony, you are live and go ahead with your public comments.
My name is Anthony Kaluji. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. First of all, I'd like to once again compliment everyone who works for DPS, including the board and superintendent, on an outstanding job of handling this crisis. The speed and efficiency with which the board and superintendent have worked during this crisis has been exceptional. With that said, I'm hopeful that this newly found speed and efficiency in problem solving will be the new norm in DPS. With that in doubt, I've been honored to represent our teachers and instructional personnel, who have once again showed themselves to be the utmost of professionals as we've shifted to remote education. Our teachers continue to stay calm and work incredibly hard to meet their students' needs while so many are caring for their own children and families at home. For everyone involved in this process, the goal of remote education needs to be to do the best you can, not trying to recreate what we usually do. And I would be remiss if I didn't say our students and their families are doing an awesome job too. These are not normal teaching and learning conditions. What we are experiencing now is emergency remote teaching and learning, or as some have called it, pandemic pedagogy. Though we are still experiencing some bumps in the road, I'm confident as long as the dialogue continues to be open and honest, we will smooth out those bumps. As discussions begin about returning to school, I urge us forward to proceed with caution and make sure you are using your influence to prevent hasty decisions from being made. The decision to return to school too early could literally be a deadly decision for our students, teachers, staff, and family. If we return too soon, it is clear that many teachers and staff members will be forced to take personal or family leave under the provisions of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Furthermore, I believe that many families will not send their children back to school if it poses a threat to them and unenroll them from DPS. Finally, let me just say something that other leaders in Brevard have been hesitant to say for political reasons. The restrictions in place are not only about your rights as a citizen, but your responsibilities as a citizen. If we do not isolate and social distance ourselves with fidelity, this pandemic will continue. If you're not an essential worker, then stay home. Stop putting other families at risk because of your own desires. Stop delaying a return to normalcy. As of Monday morning, there are 140 cases of COVID-19 in Brevard. Keep in mind that just a month ago, New York only had 140 cases too. Isolation will be the only thing that prevents us from being the next New York. Let me end with the mantra I've repeated to my teachers from the beginning. Stay safe, stay calm, stay determined to deliver the best education we can for our students, and stay home. There's a light at the end of this tunnel and together we will get through this. Thank
Great. Thank you, Anthony, very much for your public comment. Um, we are now gonna go to our next public comment from Jill. Jill, you are live. Go ahead and, uh, do your public comment.
Thank you so much. My name is Jill and, um, I'm a parent and I wanted to talk about the return to school process. First, I'd like to thank you and all of the teachers and admin for, for your response and perseverance to getting our children to learn in record speed, uh, with remote, remote learning. This has been difficult for all of us, um, but it, it's been amazing how the community has been coming together on this. And we certainly couldn't do it without your guys' leadership, so thank you for that. Um, as a concerned citizen and parent, I understand and I appreciate that the decision to open the school is not up to each district, but each district can make recommendations that carry some weight with the state's decision. And with that, uh, given that there's only going to be, if we go back to school, returns made for us, then there's only three full weeks and four days at half-days to send the kids back to school. Without a measured way and parameters that allow us to get back to school and, um, keep everyone safe, this seems like a very rushed decision, uh, to, to move us forward for basically three and a half weeks of learning. And do we really want to take that type of toll on our community? Um, unless there's some information that I'm not aware of, um, I think it's safe to say that there's no near-term vaccine in sight. The antibody test is still in development and there, uh, the, the testing parameters have opened up in general for the public, but the, the locations are regional, which impacts availability of tests still. And so I, I, I would like to echo the gentleman's, um, concerns who was ahead of me to say that we should really make sure that we're not rushing into this and we take a measured approach and we don't, we don't go into this with, um, you know, with the thought of we just wanna hurry up and get back to normal. We need to protect everybody.
Great. Thank you very much for your public comment. All right, next we are going to go to Dolores. Dolores, go ahead with your public comment.
Yes, good evening. My name is Dolores. Um, and my son is senior at Calhoun Baghdad High, so I'm just speaking on behalf of a parent. And, um, again, I too thank the school system for how well the transition has gone and all of his students, um, that he works with and his teachers and so forth. Um, however, I am kind of in the middle of the road as far as looking forward to, um, hopefully the children getting to return to school. Um, even though this person's former to me, I mentioned that they only would have a short time of school left, um, it is still a very huge amount of information that they are not going to gain by staying at school and not learning in a classroom atmosphere. I don't believe anyone is suggesting that we rush ahead without adequate information about moving forward. But on the positive side, which no one seems to want to focus on, is that the percentage of the CDC has announced that of kids who are 18 and under, who have been infected, is less, 2% or less. Um, so we need to realize that this age group is not the hugest concern. I know the teachers are older than that. But more so, I speak tonight on behalf of, even if they don't get to return to school this year, which I feel would be a shame, uh, very much so, that these seniors really need to be considered right now. I'm speaking on behalf of my senior. He's an outstanding student. He's worked very hard in his whole scholastic career. And I think an effort and plan needs to be getting worse for him. His principal is really positive about this, on how these people are not going to have their momesses time stripped from them because of this. It is not fair and they need to be taken into consideration at this time. And, um, I do believe we need to be looking toward the positive and hoping to get these kids back in school in a, in a very wise way of going about it and not, um, hoping that these kids don't go back to school. We should be trying to focus our efforts on making a safe way of letting them get back to the classrooms. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dolores, for your, for your comments. Uh, next we are going to go to Vanessa. Vanessa, you are live. Go ahead with your comment.
Good evening, everyone. This is Vanessa Skipper and I am the vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Challenges make you discover things about yourself that you never really knew. They're what makes the instrument stretch, what makes you go beyond the norm. Cicely Tyson. One of the greatest things I've noticed since we've gone into pandemic distance teaching mode is the amount of organic collaboration that is happening. I'm constantly seeing my colleagues at all levels sharing ideas, files, tools, and strategies. Teachers choosing to work together, to work smarter, not harder, and the best part about it is no one told them to do it. No one scheduled a meeting and told them to turn in their notes. No one scripted a product to be developed. No one's looking over their shoulder with a fancy Excel spreadsheet. They're just doing it because that's what teachers actually do when no one's looking. We plan, we collaborate, and we get the job done. During this time, Brevard educators are helping families and students cope with some semblance of normalcy. Enterprise Elementary is having a spirit week this week and today will show off your pet day. A teacher from McNair is focusing on the human aspect and keeping those relationships with their students by using a weekly Google check-in and asking questions like, what are you snacking on? Best TV or movie you've watched? And what form of assessment would you prefer for our end-of-legislative branch unit? A BTK teacher from Ocean Breeze is driving packets to each of her students' house, waiting to make sure they get it and safely staying in her car to answer any questions they might have. These are just a few of the awesome stories I've seen about our public school teachers. While our teachers are going beyond the norm during this uncertain time, they're hoping that you're focusing on, on the future. We know that Calhoun has to pass a budget that will raise beginning teacher salaries, but we don't know what this will look like for our veteran teachers, some of whom will have 15 years' experience, yet will make the same as someone with zero. Even though we are taking this pandemic one day at a time, we still hope you are planning for how we're going to retain our excellent veteran teachers. Given what we know about the FRS increase and the increase in base student allocation, we again cannot rely on the state's plan to do what needs to be done for all educators in Brevard. What's your plan? It's mid-April and teachers are relying on you. There's no doubt about it. Public schools are an essential part of our community. We are the largest employer in the county and with that comes great responsibility to the community we serve. A responsibility that we provide a certified and experienced teacher in our classrooms for our students. A responsibility that we provide enough mentors for our newer teachers and for our struggling teachers so that every student gets, gets served with excellence as a standard. And a responsibility that we don't carry nearly 100 vacancies for the majority of the school year. So while we are in uncertain times, it is still time to plan for our future and I hope that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vanessa, for your comment. And now we will have Sue close us up.
Thanks, everyone. I, I just wanted to give you my sincere thanks. This is a new process for everyone and I appreciate that everyone checked in and made it work for us tonight and will be playing your public comments after the school meeting tomorrow night during the public comment section.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Sue Han. I'm the superintendent for Facility Services for Brevard Public Schools and, uh, I, along with our folks at our telephone panel meeting, will be.
Sue, they liked you so much the first time. They wanted to hear you again.
In consideration of the current health, safety, and safety concerns during the COVID-19 emergency.
All right. Thank you so much, Sue, for facilitating all of our public comment last night. Thank you to those who, uh, joined us to provide public comment. We, we certainly appreciate your input. Would any board members like to respond to any of the public speakers before we move on to our consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to just take a moment that, uh, and one of the, one of the speakers referenced our seniors and, you know, certainly our seniors have, uh, this whole uncertainty and being, not being able to, um, enjoy the final weeks of their senior year that they have anticipated, like, likely all of us remember it, uh, certainly has taken its toll on our, on our kids and our seniors. I am meeting with my student government association leaders on Thursday to continue discussion about graduation and senior activities and so on. We've had conversation with our principals, our high school principals already, and they are unanimously supportive of a delayed graduation if we're unable to graduate our seniors in the traditional ceremony, uh, on the dates that have been provided. Uh, I felt it was important to make sure we heard directly from our student government leaders to make sure that they had that same sentiment. That's not that the school principals haven't already been hearing from their, their seniors. They certainly have, but I wanted that, that opportunity to connect with them personally this week. Um, so I anticipate we'll be coming out, uh, making recommendations shortly for some graduation, some delayed graduation date alternatives, um, for our seniors so that they can, you know, plan and see and, you know, kind of put that in the scope of their future. So just want our community, our kids, our seniors and, and their parents know that we are, uh, looking at that very closely this week.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. And I, I would just add in response, in, um, response to the comments about us going back to school, uh, and it was referenced in the public speaking, but I think it's important for, for all of our public out there to understand that, um, the decision to return to school or not to return to school is not up to us as a district. We will be told, um, either that we will not return or that we will return on a specific date. Um, but I do want to encourage our families, even as we worked with our families prior to the decision to close schools in unique situations where we had students that were at risk, um, we will continue to work with our families to do the best to support them. Uh, however, it, it works out going forward, obviously within the scope of what the state will allow us to do, but we certainly want to make sure that all families are, are comfortable, whichever way we end up going. So we will, I think, uh, our district team has done a phenomenal job of, of working with and accommodating various needs of families and, and I would expect that they would continue to do exactly that. All right, Dr. Mullins, that moves us into the consent agenda.
There are 22 agenda items under this category.
Does any board member wish to push any, pull any item from the consent agenda? All right, then I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
All right, it's not letting me vote. All right, I'm having a hard time getting to this. It won't let me do this for some reason.
Okay, we can just take a, we're taking a voice vote anyway, so, Ms. Escobar?
Ms. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougal?
Aye.
Ms. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. You guys don't need a break at this point, do you?
No, I'm good.
All right, then we will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and board members, there are three items under this category. First item is G-31 on the resolution regarding the extension of the one-half cent school capital outlay, say, outlay sales surtax.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion?
I just, um, I don't have something to say. I just want to make it clear to the public. Uh, there's been some discussion I've seen, uh, online and some, some forums that this is moving forward with us putting on the ballot or moving forward to the county commission to be put on the ballot, the half-cent sales tax renewal, and that is not the case. All we're doing is moving, um, some language over to OPAGA, a government agency, to evaluate if the language is proper, basically. I mean, you all know that, but I just want to make sure the public knows that before we go.
Yeah, Ms. Duskovich, I think that's a really important point for our public to know. I've had a couple of conversations around this issue. Um, and our challenge is, what we are doing tonight is nothing more than an administrative process because the state requires with new sales tax, uh, efforts that we provide the, uh, the language to OPAGA. Um, and OPAGA has a certain amount of time that they, we have to give them 180 days, I think, correct, Mr. Gibbs, to hire a CPA to complete an audit if it's necessary? And then that has to be done 60 days before a ballot initiative. And so really what it comes down to is this is just the first step to make sure that we are poised to take action should things improve, um, and, and it be appropriate, but this is just that first step. And very clearly on this agenda item, it states that this is not giving, uh, authority to move forward with presenting it to the county commission, which will be our second step for approval, uh, in the event that we do not have to have an OPAGA audit. Um, and so that will be discussed at a later date. So, uh, thank you very much, Ms. Duskovich, for bringing that up. Is there any additional board discussion on that item? Ms. McDougal, you good?
I'm good.
All right, then I will call for the vote.
Yeah, I don't know why my computer will not let me. I can see Katie and you, but I, it won't go to my name. And I don't know why it won't go to my name, but.
Can you see the scroll bar on the right-hand side?
Yeah, it's not, it, it only goes to you and Katie.
Huh.
That's, I don't understand, but.
That's okay. We're doing a voice vote anyway, so. Ms. Escobar?
Ms. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougal? Ms. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Next we have item G-32, which are procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote.
Ms. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougal?
Aye.
Ms. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Item G-33 is on amendment to catapult virtual tutoring of Title I private school students.
What are the wishes of the board?
May I approve? Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion? Ms. Escobar?
Ms. Belford?
Aye.
Ms. McDougal?
Aye.
Ms. Duskovich?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
And Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. Next, we have one information item. While we won't act on this item this evening, it may come back to us at a later meeting for a vote. Does any board member wish to discuss the information item? Okay, does any board member have anything further to report? Ms. McDougal, just checking in, since I can't see your face, do you have anything additional to report?
No, I'm okay.
Awesome. Dr. Mullins, do you have anything else you wish to add?
No, ma'am, thank you.
There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.